Anyone wishing to address the Recreation Commission tonight should fill out a card found at the back of the room and get it to a staff member as soon as possible in the meeting. Please stand and join us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please? Thank you.
Commissioner Proaño.
Here.
Commissioner Arroyo.
Here.
Did I say that right?
Yes, you said it perfectly well, thank you.
Vice Chair Pastor.
Here.
Chair Kelly.
Here.
Everybody's here.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to enter a motion to approve the agenda.
Did you not get the email?
I didn't think I would have to print it out.
Okay, do you have a copy of the agenda by any chance?
Yes. You did not get?
She didn't realize she was gonna need it.
Oh, they save paper here.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Noted, noted.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So move.
I like. Do you want to take a minute to peek at it?
I read it online.
You read it online. Okay, I'd like to second that motion then.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 26th? Or any corrections?
I don't have any corrections. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second's up.
Go ahead.
Okay.
It's a tie.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as written. Now we are on to the administration of the oath of office to our newest Commissioner, Virilio Sisson. Am I pronouncing your name correctly? Thank you.
Virilio.
Virilio. We'll get it.
Okay, and you will be sworn in this evening by the Honorable Annette Hapona. Thank you.
If you raise your right hand, please. So I'm gonna ask you to repeat your name, of course, and then follow me with the words, if you can, if you like, right? So I state your name.
I, Virilio Sisson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will defend and support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental purpose.
Reservation.
Reservation, purpose and.
Of evasion.
Of evasion, yes.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For a signature right there, please.
Thank you, Annette.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And please join us up here.
Oh, yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
It looks like Joseph needs a couple of minutes to get caught up here, so just reverse things a little bit. Maybe you'll tell us a little bit about yourself now, as opposed to the end of the meeting while we're waiting for Joseph?
Oh, yes, yeah.
That's all right with you? Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm very happy to meet you.
Your mic, turn the little gray button.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, so good evening, everybody, and nice to meet you. Yes, I'm, I went through a lot of places before I settled here. I came from the Philippines in high school, graduated there, went to Odessa Junior College as a scholar athlete in tennis.
Oh.
And then went to Oklahoma City University, and then moved to Europe, turned pro, professional, and lived in Switzerland for 20 years. Then moved back to Asia where I was involved in the Davis Cup competition, coaching the team, and then built a, and assisted in developing facilities over there, and programmed a lot of tennis, tennis programs, helped, served as Vice President of the Philippine Tennis Association. And then we made a sport tourism project from 2002. It's still, it's still running now. And then I, we migrated here 2007 to California, and now I'm here in Daly City.
Wonderful, welcome. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
And if you'd have been here a couple meetings ago, we had some ladies talking about the tennis courts over in Westlake, so I'm sure as they're listening and watching, they may just reel you in on this.
Yes, yes.
So this'll be very interesting.
Yeah, well, you know, the beauty about the tennis is actually when you talk about public parks and libraries, you know, Dwight Davis, the donor of the Davis Cup, of the competition, a worldwide competition that has now grown to over 100 something, he was the Public Parks Commissioner in 1912. And then he was a tennis player, and it was actually the tennis that spearheaded the developments of all the municipal parks. So it's St. Louis, and then I'm a product of that, because I was a member of a club where Dwight Davis himself founded the Philippine-Colombian Association. And then he became our Governor General when we were under the colonial thing in 1939. And they built the first public facility. Babe Ruth came in and then built a lot of libraries with the tennis courts, and so I was a product of that. That's why I got a scholarship.
Oh, nice.
And so, and then the best thing for me was to have been in St. Louis himself, where he, he founded it, and I won the singles championships in 1977.
Nice.
So I was a product in coming back in. So, so I figured I was talking to Mike, and I think I also, Mr. Canepa, about my children, saying, I said, the public parks are, are needing some, you know, some invigoration, and maybe if there's anything I could do and, you know, bring in some, some, you know, educational materials, let's see what I can help, and hopefully I could maybe get that passion here and.
Get the tennis going.
Yeah, maybe, depending on the needs of our, our bosses, what the demands are, right?
We'll have to talk about it one of these days. Joseph knows all about what's going on with the tennis courts, right?
And I would say I misspoke at our meeting, two meetings ago, because when we had these preliminary discussions about the capital budget, tennis courts, the improvements for Westlake and Geller.
Right.
Were in that list.
Right.
I hear that they didn't make the final list, so.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
So, we may need you more. So, Mr. Curran, you have a budget update for us, Commissioners?
As a matter of fact, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Recreation Commission. Some of you may have seen the presentation on May 16th. We were part of the overview for the City Council, reviewing the budget for the upcoming fiscal years 2017 and 2018. As you all know, we're the Department of Library and Recreation Services, so this is an abbreviated presentation of that that some of you may have seen, and dive into some of the details, especially for our newest members. We have adopted a department mission statement a while ago, and that is, serving our neighborhoods and empowering generations by bringing people together to foster community, lifelong learning, and healthy lifestyles.
So that's for the entire department?
Just for the Department of Library and Recreation, yes. We don't have a separate.
No, that's, that's, good.
This org chart that is almost indecipherable on the screen, but that depicts the structure of the organization. We're three divisions, Library Services with four libraries serving Daly City, Administration, and then Recreation Services. If there's any question about the structure, and we'll get into that in a little bit, to talk about some of the changes. We always like to toot our own horns at this interval every two years when we're reviewing the forthcoming budget. We like to reflect back on what it is that we did well, and, you know, one of the big accomplishments in the last two years was launching the iPlay website, the new online registration portal that we started, and we're finding, depending on what type of class, somewhere between 70 and 75 percent of our registrants are now going online, and we'll touch on that in a little bit, too, but it's an important feature since we are shrinking as a department, especially in administration. And I like to always include numbers because sometimes it's a little overwhelming if you take a break and you think about what we do. And just at the Cafe Dolger, prepared over 37,000 meals last fiscal year, and they weren't all consumed at Cafe Dolger every day, Monday through Friday when those meals are prepared. About 150, give or take, are served at Cafe Dolger, and another 60 or so are delivered and eaten at the Lincoln Park Community Center. So overall, 37,000 meals is pretty impressive. It's, I think, what Original Joes is doing on an average day now, but that's what we do in here. But we're just serving one lunch, one menu item a day, five days a week.
Now, is this, these meals are on a donation basis, or are they free?
You know, the Congregate Nutrition Program is a grant-based from the county, and seniors over 60 or seniors with disabilities can eat for free. There's a sliding scale. Non-señors pay full freight, which I believe is $7.50 a meal now, but others can eat free or what they can afford, usually in the $4 to $5 range.
That's very reasonable.
And I know you just heard Ed Gardo, but as a refresher, we had almost 1,000 kids, 913 children participated in our youth basketball league this year, which is, is not too shabby, so keeping a lot of kids busy after school. And speaking of after school, now, just to clarify, I have 2,849 children enrolled, so that's the total number of enrollments. They enroll in a monthly period, so some of those kids are double, triple, quadruple counted, but overall, you know, the total enrollments were 2,849. And then on the summer Youth Recreation Program, you know, four sites, 2,733 kids enrolled last year, and I expect even with the increased rate this year, we will meet or exceed that because it is still the best deal going.
Do we have a capacity on that?
We, we do, and it's, the capacity is limited by our ability to keep a good staff ratio and also the physical space we have. We sort of burst at the seams at, at Westmore Park because the clubhouse is so tiny there, and then at Geller, literally, the kids spend a lot of the day outdoors at Geller because there's other programs going on in the clubhouse. And we can accommodate about 140 or so at Westlake, and smaller numbers at Hillside and Marchbank.
Through the chair, during the year, the numbers are sound doable. The numbers do grow when the summertime comes, but do you see the numbers growing? I'm saying with regards to the children coming, or are they on different, they're the different programs, the acting program?
That's an interesting question, because the school sites, you know, their, their enrollees, generally speaking, are the kids at that school. Here, we get kids from all over the place at these different sites, so there, there are more kids in one place on any given day, I think, in the summer than there would be in the after-school program. But overall, obviously, a lot of, a lot of kids in the after-school program, too.
Yeah, totally. And the last, the other question was, I remember when we started charging, or started charging a certain amount, which is still extremely reasonable, and you're going, when we make the budget, when you increase the cost, do you guys, you were saying you were expecting that to continue to rise even though the cost is going up?
Right. And, and we did, if you recall, we talked about it a few months ago, the fees for this coming summer went up, at a glance, it seemed to go up quite a bit from last summer, but one of the complaints or criticisms we heard last year is, there was a base fee.
Yeah.
Per week, and then there were lots of add-ons for different activities during the week.
We eliminated the.
And especially if you were registering online, it meant using the drop-down menu and adding all these things to your cart. It got very confusing. So we tried to repackage it so those activities are included in registration. So if you look at it that way, the, the increase is almost nonexistent. It's almost about the same.
And it makes it so that all the children can participate.
Right, so there's not a dividing line between.
You don't have someone sitting over there saying, "My mom didn't buy that this week."
Exactly, which was an issue.
Or, "I'm supposed to be there, why?"
Yes.
Yeah.
What's not included in the base fee this year are the big, big trips.
The trips, yeah.
The age game, or the tech museum, and those kinds of things.
So I have a question. So is it all at the cost recovery? Are you making an income?
We're not doing full cost recovery. We've got a ways to go, and if you did watch the presentation last week, that was something the council has expressed interest in. Traditionally, recreation subsidies for youth and senior programs was acceptable, with the budget on the citywide basis tightening as much it has as it has now. We will be revisiting this after the summer ends to see how, how we did, but this is not full cost recovery. We're probably subsidizing, I would, if I had to venture a guess, and you can challenge me on this in a few months, I would say probably in the neighborhood of about 20 percent. So we, at the council's direction, will certainly look at that closely, and we may come back in the wintertime to readjust that fee a little bit.
I'm sorry, is it 20 percent that you're, the city's helping, or is?
Yes.
Okay, just double-checking. That's not as bad as it could be the other way.
Yes, actually.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there should be some city subsidy on it. It's just a matter of how much, you know?
Well, 20 percent.
And we went from a full city subsidy.
That's what I was gonna say.
Not very long ago.
To 80 percent covered.
I want to say, was it 2009 or thereabouts?
Five, five years ago.
Oh, 2011.
Yeah.
Prior to that, there were summer youth programs at a whole bunch of sites, and they were, they were free and very staff-intensive to have, but, you know, because there were so many staff, too, I would argue, they weren't the best-trained staff. It was almost summer babysitting. A lot more structure, a lot more training, a lot more scrutinizing of the staff that we, we bring onboard for the summer than in, in past years.
So forgive me, I'll, I'll seek a clarification on what the City Council did say. So did they push back on wanting more subsidies or less?
Less subsidies.
Less, okay.
Higher fees, less subsidy.
Yeah.
And we did, we did hear, I would say, so far, probably a half dozen or so parents have noticed the, the increase and have, have asked why. We do, just a reminder, too, we do have a scholarship that can be used one time per season, and we do have people that take advantage of that, and basically, it's, if, if you qualify for food stamps, we use the same criteria.
Yeah.
So we do have people that, that take us up on that. And we've also referred, if you happen to have a child who will be entering kindergarten or entering the first grade within the Jefferson Elementary School District, there is an absolutely 100 percent free program, Inspiring Summers, that they are offering through the county as part of the Summer Learning Initiative, paid for by Measure A. And if you're familiar with the Big Lift, did we, did we do a presentation on the Big Lift, maybe? Anyway, the Big Lift.
I think so.
For those of you who may not know about the Big Lift Initiative, it's a county-wide effort to bring children up to grade reading level by third grade, and what we've found, and we, what people who look into these things have found, not me, even though San Mateo County is one of the wealthiest counties on the planet, we have an issue with children not learning to read proficiently by third grade, and what the long-term studies have demonstrated is that if children who don't reach reading proficiency by the third grade never catch up, they spend the rest of their academic life struggling to keep up with their class, and they never quite get there. So there's a very intense effort in this county right now to, to try and rectify that. And I'm gonna go off the top of my head, I want to say only about 48 percent of San Mateo County third graders are at third grade reading level, which means a whole heck of a lot of them are not quite there yet.
Yeah.
All right, where was I?
Back to your, sorry.
Still here, all right. And we definitely are gonna try and keep doing the good things we do, you know, offer affordable leisure and recreation programs, and we're always exploring new partnerships to see if we can improve in the way that we deliver services and programs to the community. And that's interesting bottom line, because I did not, that's, that's straight from the presentation of the council. We will continue to review what subsidies are being made and to keep those under control across the board. So now the hard part. We, as a department, were challenged initially with a target reduction number of $1.1 million for the coming fiscal year, which is a huge number for about a $10 million operating budget. We went through many iterations in looking at ways that we could cut costs from the Department of Library and Recreation Services. To reach a number anywhere near $1 million, let alone the target number, we could not find a way to do that without closing facilities. A lot of our fixed charges, the charges that are beyond our department's control, things like building maintenance, custodial, lights, and computers, and telephones, just, just on the building maintenance side, we, we pay over a million dollars a year out of our, a million dollars of our $10 million budget go to those kinds of things. So closing buildings would help us get there by saving money in building maintenance. And for example, the cost of maintaining War Memorial for a fiscal year is about $467,000. It's a lot of money. I'm here to say that that is not the path we ultimately went down. We, we looked at other ways that we can trim, and I won't, I won't get into the library stuff right now, but in recreation specifically, we did eliminate a couple of positions, and that's on the next slide, but because our shrinking administrative staff, which not very long ago was eight full-time administrators, we're gonna be down to three. And with all of, you know, doing the business functions, payroll, paying bills, and those sorts of things, it's difficult to balance the customer service part. And so what we are proposing, starting next fiscal year, would be to close the administrative offices one day a week, probably on Monday, possibly on Friday, we're still going back and forth on that, so that the staff that's there can focus on those admin tasks so that they're free to serve the public the other four days a week. So even, the office would be closed to the public, but we would be behind the scenes doing administrative tasks. Another big change.
Question for you on that. A while back, the city closed or had fewer employees rotating four day a week, and there were a lot of complaints about the accessibility of staff. So is it, does, do you really get that much out of it by closing a full day versus maybe closing Monday morning and Friday afternoon?
I agree.
That, that's a fair question. If, if no one ever called in sick, if no one ever took vacation.
Okay.
I would say that would be totally reasonable. So now with, with three people, and, you know, these are all veteran employees, so they've accrued a lot of vacation, so they're entitled to their vacation, and we all get sick, and, and it gets really complicated. I mean, it's even more complicated on the library side, to be honest.
No, I understand.
But, but to shrink down, and, you know, people need to go to the bathroom, they need their breaks and, and their lunches, so it, it might work, but.
It wouldn't be manageable.
It wouldn't be ideal.
Okay.
So.
Just curious.
And, and, you know, this, this is brand-new territory for us, so we'll definitely see how it's going. We had talked about maybe, of all the transactions we do, and we do a lot of them every day, facility reservations take, oh, yeah, I'm looking at some.
They do, they take.
Even if you've done it a million times.
No, I mean, the, the application is, is, has got a lot of questions on it, and you can't, you can't pre-fill it out, you have to come in and stand at the counter and fill it out, which takes a staff person's time if you have any questions, if you've not done it before, and they can't be doing anything else. So I've been in there filling out an application, and the phone will be ringing, and it's like, "Just go answer the phone, I'll be fine, I can, I can wait," but I never expect to get out of there in less than half an hour.
And, and you're sort of the exception in that you've done this routine many times. Most, the vast majority of people coming in to rent a facility for a baby shower or a swimming party, it's their first time, they've never been in the building, they don't know the process, they're sort of taken back by the rules, the alcohol rules are kind of goofy, and maybe that's something we can talk about at another meeting, but, you know, there's insurance requirements and different fee structures and, you know, nonprofit, and, you know, if you are nonprofit, you gotta prove that you're nonprofit, we are. So those transactions, a half hour is probably about average, and we've scrutinized the heck out of ways to make that more efficient, including going online, but the problem is, we, there are, there's, there's so much confusion, and we really want to reiterate the important rules and go over them and make sure, and I'll say, even doing that on a weekly basis, people, I'll give you an example, one of the rules is, you know, we don't allow change. Two weeks prior, you have to be paid in full, and there's no more changes. I would say about half of the people that make a facility reservation change it a couple times before the date comes, and a lot of them want to change it two days before, or, or they now want to add a, you know, they're gonna serve beer where they, anyway, so we want to make sure that everybody understands that, and it's hard to do that in an online, you know, maybe you click that you agree without reading it, we make sure they read it and they initial every one of those rules for those reasons. So if there was a safe way to automate it, we would love it, but there's, there's just too many instances.
Well, as far as I know, the other cities in the county are not automated for facility rentals either because they have the same.
And, and we, we checked around, and, and some, some cities, like South San Francisco, you have to have an appointment to go in.
Yeah.
To make a reservation. A lot of cities require full payment 30 days before your event. We, you know, we have frequently people right up against that two-week window to make their reservation, let alone pay, and I can't tell you how, you know, the percentage of people that we have to badger and badger to get that final payment. Frequently, we have final payments after the deadline, which is very staff-intensive, too, because.
Making the phone calls.
Anyway, but that was a lot of talking on one item, so.
Sorry.
The Activity Guide, that hopefully you all know and are familiar with, it's not going away necessarily, but we are gonna drastically cut back on the number that we print, and we're not gonna mail them to every single postal customer in Daly City like we do now. What we're gonna do initially is we'll send postcards to alert people that they're ready, and they can pick them up at our libraries or our admin offices or, or community centers. Postage costs a lot of money, and, and the reality is, you know, we've got five people who are very engaged in the community here, and I'm sure you treasure that, like, you know, I used to look forward to the Sears catalog around Christmas time. But, you know, as much as we like to flatter ourselves, a certain percentage of those go from the mailbox to the recycle bin. So we want to make sure we're not wasting the resources or spending a lot of money on postage for those that go straight to the recycle bin. For, for those that need them, we'll provide them, absolutely. And we are finding, as I mentioned earlier, more and more people are finding their way online.
Mm-hmm.
And in fact, I thought this was such a cutting-edge thing. Well, someone was at one of those California Parks and Recreation group meetings last week, and it's a trend, that cities are, and it's funny, up until now, you go, especially if you find a city about the same size, the Activity Guide that we produce is almost identical in structure and nature up and down the state of California, so we will, we will continue to produce it, we will continue to print probably 10,000, I think 10,000 is our target versus 36,000.
Oh, yeah. About the advertising for it.
We are gonna let our advertisers know that we are not mailing them to as many homes, and, you know, hopefully they're gonna advertise because they support the city of Daly City. We'll, we'll see, that, that may, that may affect our revenue, but our revenue doesn't offset the cost of it, not.
No, no, have, have you considered an email?
Yes, we do, and that's one.
When, when it's ready and online and we can go and look at it?
Yes, and that's one of the great features of the iPlay website, is everyone who has an account has an email address that we can email, and we can email related to, you know, the class that they're in, or we can do a broad email.
So then those of us who, I mean, I not used iPlay to set up, you could go in and set up an account there to get your email on that list?
You could. And we don't, it's not something, again, because of the shrinking staff, it's not something we take advantage of a lot, but I'm sure, like, for the summer youth program, we'll send out little reminders to the parents, you know, little things like. But I'm sure, like for the summer youth program, we'll send out little reminders to the parents, you know, little things like, you know, make sure the kid has water and sunscreen and that sort of thing.
I also just wanted to say, the concerns about advertisers going away, you could possibly put them on the website or on that link where, where your, your activity guide is going to be. And I just wanted to find out, now, of course, there's a population that wouldn't be internet savvy. So, what, what will happen is they'll get the postcard and they'll have to come to, to where? To the library or?
They, they can request one be mailed to them, or they can, they can come, it's, it's a lot cheaper to mail one than it is to mail 36,000. But, you know, we're hoping people will go online to look for it, or they'll stop by. Our power users that are around the facilities, the facilities that they would be taking classes at, will have the guides there to pick up.
Will they be in the libraries too?
Absolutely.
City Clerk's Office, same as the usual stuff?
Yeah, they'll be around City Hall, the community centers.
So they'll be accessible?
Okay, so another big change is, you know, Daly City has a long history of being a great youth baseball program. And we are going forward eliminating the double-A and triple-A youth baseball. And those are the older kids, and there is a cost savings there, but, but there's a practical part to that too. For whatever reason, and it could be because we have a basketball crazy town right now. The participation at the T-ball level is huge. You know, start off kindergarten, first grade, second grade, as they get older, the numbers plummet. By the time the kids are in, say, fourth, fifth grade, we, we're not getting enough registration to really have a viable league. So what happens is, you have four teams and they just play each other for the whole season. So, I think part of that is there are so many new options for kids that really want to play. There are AAU teams, there are travel teams, there are club teams. And that, that really goes for every sport now. That, that is a new phenomenon that was not here 10 years ago. But you name a sport and there's a travel team based in Daly City.
Yes, Joseph, I just wanted to share this sort of trend also in Europe that from five to about 12, they go into a lot of team sports, soccer, baseball, and then by the time they get to the 13 to 17, they take on the individual sports already. So that's why you have-
Perhaps?
Yes, tennis, and then some go into, you know, golf or whatever. But, but you're right about that, so that, I agree with that, they use-
And it's a new trend, because we used to have a full league-
Yeah.
All, all the way up and, you know, if, if former Commissioner Tom Letta was here, he would-
Yes.
He's a baseball guy.
Yeah.
Although he hopes that that feeds into his, you know, because he coaches at City College.
Probably, the net number of kids playing baseball at that age is probably unchanged. They're just going-
Going to other places.
Paying a lot more money than they would pay to play in our league. But to get on these travel teams and then, you know, they end up in places like Stockton and Visalia and Reno on Daly City-based travel teams.
And hopefully scholarships for college.
The developmental approach is actually that the all-around sports from five to 15 is like team sports. Then from 14, they go individually, actually, that's the trend. And that's where we, we need to sort of focus on the swimming and golf, you know, whatever, golf.
Absolutely.
And then, yeah, so-
Have you noticed, we're not, we're not touching swimming, just as a side note?
Yeah.
Because you're so busy there.
All of the things we do, our swim program is the best in cost recovery. We're, we're running at capacity in most of our swim classes and many of them fill up within 30 seconds of when they open. It's crazy.
My kids go to a gym on a pool, yeah.
Well, didn't, and also didn't we talk at one point too about the flag football?
Yes, flag football is another one of those things that we have seen the participation drop quite a bit from year to year. And so we're proposing to eliminate that, there'll be a little bit of savings there too. And again, the kids that really want to play, there is, there's this new league that sprung up in San Francisco that is heavily recruiting Daly City kids. And in fact, I had people coming in last year with post, very slick-looking postcards about this league. They mistakenly thought it was our league and they had all these questions and I looked at it, this isn't us. But it's a San Francisco-based league. It's a pay, you know, it's, it's a money-making thing.
Wow.
And, and they, they ran our fields and, and a lot of fields in San Francisco, so.
And it's flag.
Yes.
And people are paying for their kids to go to this. And it's not a few hundred, it's a lot of money.
I also think that part of the contribution to that is the concussion thing too, people are concerned about.
Yeah, I think, I think that-
And I think that their parents are getting their kids involved in flag before they're getting them involved in the bang-your-head.
Yeah, definitely. The, I'm going to hit you on the last one. I, I was concerned when I saw this, this showcase league basketball.
Showcase League was around for 31 years. Now, if you recall, last year, it ended up not going because we did not have enough kids. The year before, the Daly City Police Athletic League chipped in a substantial amount of money, so they basically cut the fees for the players in half. Well, their, their policies, they don't fund programs on an ongoing basis, they do one-time investments. In fact, you know what, that wasn't Police Athletic League, I take that back, it was drug forfeiture money. And so it's restricted how they can spend that. So when we, again, you know, this, this isn't even a full-cost recovery, but the fee that we had, and I'm sorry, I don't remember it off the top of my head, kids just didn't register. And we did all the outreach in the schools and kids are playing basketball for sure, but they didn't sign up again for two years in a row. So rather than keep it on the books, we're, we're eliminating that one.
So, that, that, well, I'm just saying, because I remember when my kids played, that was like huge, it was huge. My daughter, I think, and she's, well, I'm not going to say how old my daughter is, but anyway, she still has her shirt, you know? I mean, she has, because you guys would give the t-shirts out, it was a big deal. It, it's sad that, because I see that we, our, our basketball's going, it's doing well. So how do we, how do we lose them?
You know, I think it goes back to the, the issue about, you know, the age group. These, these are high school kids that are finding other outlets, you know?
They're finding that they're not going to get a college scholarship playing basketball, they got to go find something else.
I imagine there's, there's a whole bunch of explanations, you know, case by case, but they stayed away in large numbers the last two-
For two years. Well, the good thing is, if we're removing that off the budget, then we're saving money, even though it's not being used.
And it allows us to redeploy resources. I mean, flag football took a lot of staff resources, you know, out there at night, running practices and on the weekends, doing games and stuff, so. And, and the scheduling, it's, it's, it's very labor-intensive. And the same, I'd say, was, was true for showcase. So we're redeploying those staff into other areas that needed help.
Good.
So by, through the chair, by these reductions going into play, in terms of going into effect, that, that would mean those unused fields will be available to those that are paying a fee to use the fields?
You are absolutely right, and-
Ka-ching, ka-ching.
We, we'll talk about that at another meeting.
All right.
And maybe after this meeting and chat with you a little bit. And I'm so sorry to say- The summer tennis, only the summer tennis, and again-
It's like going, what, I get here and you do this?
Join us on a timely day.
Oh, wow.
It was another one of those, the numbers weren't great, the staff time was. And so, and this, just the summer tennis program, not, not the overall tennis program is, is still there through contract basis, but the staff-run summer tennis program will go away. And, and we've seen those numbers drop quite a bit, too. And then the Westlake Garden Deli, where I eat lunch way too often. For those of you not familiar with it, it's, it's primarily a volunteer-run little deli at the Dolder Senior Center that somehow, much to my dismay, was running a pretty large deficit year to year. And we certainly don't want to eliminate it because it is a nice place for seniors to congregate. Affordable sandwiches and beverages and desserts and such, so-
Sandwiches are good, too.
And they are good. So, we've, we've met and we're going to try and keep them focused on a, on a simpler menu and not get too creative. What's happening is, is ordering food beyond the traditional deli offerings. And, and every Friday, stuff that didn't sell would end up in compost, so there was, there was definitely some spoil, as there is, you know, with any restaurant. But we're going to try to keep that under control, scale back the menu, keep her closer on the ordering, where they're, they're looking at different options for where, where the food can come from. We've always piggybacked on the same provider for the congregate nutrition program because it's all delivered and it may be more cost-effective to go out and purchase some of the stuff locally and maybe even better quality, we'll see. Another one that I know is, is near and I can see Commissioner Vice Chair Pastor's face, it's not looking happy. This, this was probably the most emotional cut as far as long-term staff that have had a really close connection to the teen leadership challenge.
Well, hasn't some of the staff come through that program?
Yes, that is true. And this, this was 100% subsidized. And, you know, if you're not familiar with, it was for teens from the local high schools at the Occidental CYO camp every fall. And it was, it was a costly, costly program. The program, the initial program itself was very successful and has, has had a long history. And Vice Chair Pastor's, I don't know if any of you have had the, you've, you've actually been-
Oh, yes, several visits up there, yeah, and one over, a couple over the states.
So the initial, you know, the weekend, the retreat part of it was phenomenal. But the, the way it was designed was to keep these kids engaged throughout the school year and get them involved in their schools and in their community. And it was like pulling teeth after that initial, maybe, I think there were about 60 to 80 kids in that initial, the initial, I keep calling it a retreat because I can't think of a better word, but putting them back and keeping them engaged was not very successful. And I'm talking, there were meetings where we had a handful of kids show up, sometimes none. They, they canceled some of their other activities from the year because we just couldn't get the school kids. And, and who knows, you know, it's different being a teen in 2016 than it was in 1990. There's, there's more distractions and other life commitments. But it was, it was a lot of money benefiting a fairly small group of kids that didn't really achieve its intended goals. That, that, they used to, they used to be quite successful year, year-round. These kids were engaged in the community and they would come together, you know, representatives from the different high schools and... So that one is, is going away too.
Wow.
Through, through the chair, what kind of budget was it drawing from, what kind of cost was it drawing from the?
That was running between 17 and $20,000 for, for the big event.
And that would be transportation and the use of the facilities?
Transportation, food, lodging, you know, the, the CYO retreat, I think, was over 10,000 alone just for that.
Yeah.
And then for the facility up there was additional 10,000?
No, that was for that facility.
There is, again, I'm going from memory, but I want to say it was right about 17.
Yeah, because over the years, I know that in the early going, it was reaching at-risk youngsters that were, found their way through, through the program to become leaders in the community and then it reached folks from continuation high schools to, to find some identity out there. And, and I remember a few instances where they came in and showed their presentations-
Absolutely.
Here in front of us of the great work that they put together. But, yeah, I'm sorry to see it part of the chopping block, but maybe if there's some benefactors out there listening tonight that would want to continue-
Write a $20,000 check to save it?
Yeah.
Or to propose something that maybe doesn't involve an overnight, but an all-day-long-
Retreat somewhere here.
You know, I mean, those can be very successful too if they're done correctly. So, you know, there's always that possibility, I would hope, because I think these kinds of things are great. Because we don't offer a whole lot for the teenagers here.
Right.
You know, and, and one of the key components to that too are the teachers in the high schools. And, you know, we, we had a solid base of, of teachers that were committed to it a long time. Well, as they retired and moved on, it was more difficult to, to attract new teachers.
Right.
So, you know, that, that's definite, not, not the overriding problem, but it was a consideration too. Is that the participation from the schools and the administrations and the teachers is not what it was, you know, 20 years ago.
The whole focus for teachers has changed anyways.
Yeah.
So through the chair, I was just going to say was when my kids were in high school, they had their retreats in high school, at the high schools, right? And that's something that, you know, they, they, if they, sometimes they bring things up, you know, like fun parts of school was the retreats, you know, junior year, senior year. And I wondered if, because it's, what exactly Jack and Denise were saying is that reaching the, the at-risk students, the ones that needed help, losing that opportunity, you know, I wondered if the, the idea, do they do something like this in some of the high schools? The public high schools?
I, I am not aware of that.
I mean, my kids went to Catholic school, so, but they did do that. And it was really the highlight of their junior, senior years is, is the retreat.
I'm not aware of, I've not heard, I've not heard any of the kids that volunteer with me talk about anything like that in high schools.
So I'm just, you know, it would be nice to see.
Resource officers from the police department used to be very engaged in it too, and, you know, that's, that's changed over the years.
You're losing the support, is what you're saying, and the, and the guidance?
It's a different world in 2016 than it was when this program was in its heyday. I, I don't want to, you know, lay blame on, on any component of it, it's just everything is a little bit different and, and, you know, if there is a benefactor out there, maybe we'll revisit it and may, maybe it needs to be-
Joseph can be reached at 650.
And maybe, you know, if nothing else, maybe, you know, we hit the pause button and see, you know, what, what is the most relevant type of program? Maybe, maybe an in-school or some neutral place? You know, we, we've talked about having a community camp out at Westlake Park as long as I've been, and we haven't pulled that one off yet either. But, you know, where we can get the kids together and, and work as teams, and it's all about team building and trust building and communicating.
Joseph, to Jack, to Vice Chair Jack's point, you know, I do run a teen leadership program in San Francisco. It's a college prep program that has elements of leadership in it. And we do get grants for it. However, we also do engage local businesses in the neighborhood to be benefactors. So I was going to ask, just not for this program, but for, for the entire recreation program menu, do you, is there sufficient engagement with local businesses so that they can?
And this, this is a subject, I'm not exaggerating, that probably comes up every single day, including, it came up today. The difference between Daly City and San Francisco and every other city to the south of us, we don't have a very strong corporate presence here. We don't, we don't have Genentech, we don't have Oracle, we don't have Facebook or YouTube-
Or Lyft.
Or, or Visa or Wells Fargo. So, we, we do have relationships with, with corporate partners. And I'll name names because it's, the usual suspects give a little bit to just about every, every big thing we do. Ceremony Shopping Center is a great partner. First National Bank, Daly City Business from day one is a great partner. Kaiser sometimes, PG&E sometimes, Wells Fargo.
Comcast, never.
Duggins?
Oh, yes, Duggins, absolutely.
City Host Lions?
Westlake Village Apartments and, and the Daly City Host Lions. In a similar point in history, one of the programs that was being eliminated, just for historical point of reference, was our annual spring thing, what do we call it this spring?
Fun Day.
Spring Fun Day.
That was why I knew how many years ago it was, because we just did it for the fifth time.
So that, that was a program that was just like this, it was being eliminated in the Daly City Host Lions, which Chair Kelly happens to be a member of. And, and then Councilmember Carol Clyde said, well, you know, maybe, maybe we, maybe we can help. And ever since then, what year was it, 2011?
Five years ago.
That program is being completely underwritten by the Daly City Host Lions and we're very appreciative.
And we had so many children this last year, this last springtime, we, we, wasn't it, it was amazing.
It's amazing, but the, the nice part about when you can get service organizations and community groups and you, the joy that you get out of it and the, and the fun that the kids have, it makes it worthwhile. But Daly City historically has been a bedroom community and that is, you know, about 90% of the reason that we're in. The budget issues that we're in right now is because there's no, there's no revenue coming in. And so, it just, it just makes it all that much more difficult to, to get corporate sponsorship for, for anything, whether you're a nonprofit or the city here, it's very, very difficult to do fundraising.
And I'm sure I left some out, and one that comes to mind is Republic Services, our partner.
Oh, absolutely, ally.
Very, very generous over the years, and I'm sure there's others that I'm-
San Mateo Credit Union.
Credit Union's helped out.
Classic. I'm sure the people were-
We are a community with lots of nonprofit groups and we're all fishing in that same pond. And so, where our corporate partners may help us, they're, they're spread so thin because they are helping everybody.
And it's sometimes easier, like for us- And it's sometimes easier like for us as the Daly City Host Lions to go out to the smaller businesses and ask them for a little bit because they, we're a smaller organization. So they don't feel as bad that they can't give the big money. So there's a lot of those kinds of little opportunities for us too.
Trader Joe's is another one.
Trader Joe's is. I mean, we could go on and on, we don't wanna leave anybody out.
But no one's writing the twenty thousand dollar check.
Yeah, it's all very small.
So hopefully the real estate companies that are planning to build here, if, if there are, they're spending, will be, will be engaged, you know, in development agreements with local community. After all, they are supposed to serve families, children.
They're all very willing to be engaged until their projects are approved and then you can't get them on the phone anymore.
Absolutely, but then, well, there is a way to do this.
Well, just lastly through the chair, since we're talking about, um, ideas on, 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 uh, attaining some dollars and cents. But, um, I always see when I go through the community, uh, adopt a freeway. Adopt this or adopt that.
Yeah.
Though you're, if you're a local business or you're, you're a large business and, and you do have employees living here, but you don't, um, have your address here in Daly City, maybe you can, can think of, uh, consider us as adopting a program.
There you go.
Adopting Daly City as your second partner in this greater community of San Mateo County to, uh, help us help the kids. And that's our future leaders here in, in, uh, in the community. And hopefully future leaders in your company down the road. And, uh, but, um, think of us, uh, in terms of adopting another city, other than the ones that you have your addresses at. So that is, that's all I have to say.
No, that's a good idea.
Nicely done.
So now we distracted you from your.
Right, and I'll say this is taking a lot longer than it did to do the whole department, um, overview with the city council. You're a more engaged audience.
We're sorry.
No, it's no need to apologize. All right, uh, so we, we briefly talked about personnel. So there are, there are some personnel reductions. Currently, there are two account clerk, two positions within our administrative, uh, office. That will be reduced to one. And we have one other full-time position that's being eliminated, it's a senior center program assistant. And then, uh, we will have salary savings at least in the coming fiscal year. Uh, one of our recreation program supervisors is on a, an extended unpaid leave of absence. So we are having some salary savings that may very well carry forward. We'll know about this time next year, the status of that, so. Yes, it was, uh, it was not fun having.
Cutting.
Personnel reductions and, uh, as far as I know, I was the only department head in the city that had to give some layoff notices in the last week. We're talking about reductions across the city, but a lot of the other departments are achieving that through attrition and retirement. Um, I had actual hard layoffs to do.
I'm sorry you had to do that.
That is, that is not fun.
Through the chair, I just was gonna, so after all this, and you did the numbers, how much was the savings?
Well, funny you should say that because, look at that. And, and I will, I will say, um, these numbers were changing right up, literally up until we presented to the city council. So a lot of these numbers were generated not by me, but from our finance department. So, um, they're there in black and white and I see Jack writing them down. I wouldn't stake my life to any of these numbers, but, um, the rough calculations, again, not from my department, salary savings of two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. The activity guide, uh, postage and printing savings are about twenty-three thousand dollars for the year. Uh, the youth sports will save us about thirty thousand dollars. Now here it says teen leadership challenge, fourteen thousand dollars. My recollection is we spent a lot more than fourteen thousand dollars, but.
Could be an average too.
Um, and you know, and maybe, and maybe there was some sponsorship that offset the overall costs. And the Garden Deli, we're, we're hoping to trim about fifteen thousand dollars off that and, and hopefully keep them solvent for the future, cause that's a great little operation. So the net projected savings, um, just on the recreation side, well, I should say recreation and administration is about three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And, you know, I started this presentation saying that.
Million.
We were, we were looking at closing facilities to reach our target. And I'm glad to say we didn't close any facilities. On the library side, we, we did some pretty serious reductions of library hours at the four branches. Uh, I didn't include it in here because I made that presentation last week to the board of trustees, but I have that information if anyone's curious. And so the overall department projected savings is five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So, you know, roughly half million dollars. What's interesting about that is if I go to the next slide, if you look at the trend, the, the bottom line is, is the important number. The bottom line is we are about, you know, just a hair over ten million dollars. Even with five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings, our budget is increasing. And part of that is we've got a, a union workforce. We have Teamsters, we have AFME. And after going years and years and years with no increase, in fact, you're actually taking cuts to their salaries, um, they had some of those cuts reinstated this year and actually for the first time, I believe, I wanna say seven years, um, we had some raises. So there was a huge fiscal impact for trying to bring our workforce close to the market. And we are nowhere near the market if you look.
The minimum wage increase.
And, and we had a minimum wage increase which, which affected us too. So we had to readjust our hourly rates to, you know.
So is that figured into seventeen?
Pardon me?
Is the minimum wage increase in seventeen figured in there already?
You know, again, I, I wish I could tell you the magic behind this. This is, this entire slide was, uh.
The finances doing it, okay, well, I'm sure they're taking that into consideration.
I assume they, they just take.
So through the chair, we started this conversation and you said, we need to cut a million, one hundred thousand. I'm looking, and I know you cut, you know, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars, but then when you look at the bottom number.
We've gone up, exactly.
Yeah, but isn't the one point one, the library and recreation?
Yeah, well, but, but the five hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Is all of it.
Is all of it.
Right, but the, the total, one point one million was for library and recreation. So it's half and half, basically.
But still, but the total, the five forty-nine, two hundred, that's everything, both, he just said.
It is, it is, it is.
It's library also?
Yes, um, if I go back here.
He, he, he was making us feel happy, but I'm not happy.
Just on the recreation and admin side was three sixty-six. So together with the cuts from the library, it was five hundred and forty-nine thousand.
We got the brood up.
Which, which is a huge number, but it's roughly half, almost exactly half coincidentally of what our target was. So, no, you raise a good question. The budget isn't solved, the, the deficit, the structural deficit citywide is not solved. It's not gonna be solved in library and recreation, it's not gonna be solved in public safety or public works. It's, it's cutting everywhere. And if you stay tuned, um, there will be lots of discussion, I'm sure, in the, the coming weeks and months about the need to enhance revenues and, you know, not to bore you with civics one-on-one Daly City, especially those who took our citizens academy. But, you know, Daly City is very dependent on two main revenue sources, property tax and sales tax. And while those are wonderful revenue generators, um, it's not very diverse. It's been, if it, when it, it dropped. Very much during, during the recession and it's, it's kind of been flat. Whereas the expenditures, pensions and, and medical are just going through the roof. So revenues are not keeping pace with the expenditures and that, that is a problem. So we need, we need to diversify the, the city's revenue sources. And I'm sure that we'll be talking about, you know, I don't know what that's gonna be. It could be a sales tax measure, it could be a parcel tax, it could be something that, you know, we haven't yet thought about. But whatever it is, it's, it's gonna be subject to voter approval. And that's, that's always a bit of a gamble. California cities in general have been pretty supportive of revenue, uh, uh, tax, tax-based revenue ballot measures. But, you know, Daly, Daly City is different in a lot of ways, so stay tuned to that.
Thank you.
If nothing happens, yeah, we'll, we'll be in very big trouble.
We'll be having different conversations.
Within a couple of years.
So that was exciting and uplifting.
That, that winds up.
Well, I, I, I don't know, you know, how, what all of you did, but I did watch the budget presentations pretty closely and it is really very, very scary.
Yeah.
And I would encourage you, um, to, is it the twenty-third, twenty-fifth of June?
June twenty-seventh, I believe, is the day that the city council will consider adopting the fiscal, uh, budget for the next two years.
So that would be something I would encourage not just the five of us, but the entire public to, to pay close attention to because it should be.
And, and, you know, to their credit, the public really has probably paid more attention within the last two or three weeks than, than I can recall in many, many years. Carol would be proud.
Well, it just, it would be nice if it was on more than just one or two issues and more on a, an over, overview. Thank you, Joseph. Any further questions from the commissioners?
It can only go up, right? I feel so bad, we get two new people and they're just going, this is grim. But it's not as grim. We didn't cut anything yet and they didn't shut the doors on anything.
We're still the commission that gets to encourage fun here in Daly City, so.
And the nice thing is we have you for the, I, I'm really excited at that ideas of, of the tennis, you know, getting new life into it and you bringing all that knowledge and experience and your fundraising, I think that's, wow.
It could be, it could be interesting and fun for a while, so.
Yeah, we're always fun.
Right, so are there any commissioners' reports this evening?
None from here.
Okay. Uh, announcements?
Okay, I will try to do this quickly. Uh, I mentioned before, Junior Giants registration is open and the program begins for another fun-filled summer on Monday, June thirteenth. So if, if you know anybody that is interested, um, I'll pass one of those around.
Very cute.
There is a grant-funded community summer barbecue kickoff and it's actually with our brothers and sisters with the Daly City Public Library. That, uh, summer barbecue kickoff will be at Geller Park on Sunday, June fifth from one to three. And, uh, it's, it's summertime and getting the kids out and introducing them to programs at the library primarily, but, uh, we're in it all together, so that. And then the summer kickoff carnival at the pool will be Saturday, June eleventh. That's the GeoMo pool at Westmore High School. And then we got a whole bunch of summer camps and programs that kick off, um, actually, June sixth, where the Jefferson Elementary School kids are still in session on June sixth, but the, a couple of the other districts around us, including South San Francisco, Uniper Serra School, they are out. So we actually start our summer youth camp a little bit early, or summer youth program a little bit early this year uh, because of the demand from Uniper Serra School. So June sixth and then across the city on the thirteenth.
So we, uh, we were fortunate this year to have all of these spring breaks the same week, but we couldn't get the.
Dismissal, no.
Yeah, couldn't get the dismissal.
And it was actually an issue last year.
Yeah.
And we didn't realize that there was a demand that, because it's, I think it's maybe one or two schools. But there's enough of them that have no place to go that we, we, and it's a great training opportunity for staff to sort of ease into summer rather than baptism by fire.
So now it starts June the sixth, what's the last week? If there's the differences in the schools going back.
You know what? Teach a chair to fish.
Yes, I know.
Whatever that saying is, it's all in here.
Don't feed me, teach me to fish, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
August eighth to twelfth.
It's a nice brochure.
Yeah, you know, and we've, we've been really fortunate to have some really talented hourly, part-time staff that do this. And we lost two of them. And, and the good news is, is we've had some, you know, they obviously have some talent that have gone on to full-time jobs, uh, different agencies and companies in San Francisco, so. We're a good training ground and hopefully we can attract a couple more.
It was like the Warriors used to be. You had a good player and then they went somewhere else, now we keep them.
I am so done.
Okay, um, I have no speaker cards, so, um, it looks as though there are no public comment. Our one audience member could be sound asleep. Um, so I would take a motion to adjourn.
I would enter the motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'm sorry, I, yes, second, I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned and we will be back here.